Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer by Councilman Mark Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the precious gift of life. May we, as representatives of our citizens, render just decisions for the welfare of our communities. Guide us in our deliberations. We thank you for our volunteers. Bless all of our city employees and their families. This week, we give special thanks to the men and women who serve in our Department of Public Works. Guide our nation in a path of morality. We ask, Father, that you bless all of humanity, so nations may live as one in peace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, May 20, 2019, City Council meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater, Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna, Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather, Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
And the next item we have is the adoption of agendas. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Should we? We will have a motion, I should say, that's going to be added, but I don't believe we need to amend the agenda, but there will be a motion under new business that Rick will have for us in writing. Okay. And the next item, miscellaneous agenda items. At this time, we get to recognize this year's Sketch Day Mayor's Choice Award winner, Ms. Brittany Spencer. So we'd like to welcome Brittany. If you'd like to come up to the podium, we have Brittany here with us this evening. And Brittany is going to leave as soon as we do this presentation because she is going to the Heritage Award Dinner tonight, and we appreciate you being here this evening. And we wanted to highlight your Sketch Day picture here that you can see here in front of us, and we really think this is something that pertains to what's going on now in the city, which is why I chose it for the Mayor's Choice Award. You captured this home beautifully and wanted to give you a moment to come here and recognize you. So do you want to tell us what inspired you to draw this house?
Um, I don't know. I just really liked the archway there, and the funny thing is, we were actually sitting on the porch of the house that I painted last year, so I thought that would be kind of fun to do. So, yeah.
That is great. And then, tell us where you go to school.
Jefferson City High School.
Great. And what year are you?
Senior. I graduated a couple days ago, so, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to pursue your art? Do you plan to pursue that?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to. I just have to get through basic training first for the National Guard, but, yeah.
Wow. Well, thank you for serving our country. That's wonderful, and we wish you all the best in the future. And do you have some family members and guests with you this evening?
Yeah, I have my dad and my stepmom, and then my friend Anastasia.
Great. Well, we are so glad that you came tonight, and I'm going to read the back here. I wrote a few comments about your piece. So it says, "The Mayor's Choice Award. This beautiful, colorful, vibrant painting of the Standish House is perfect for the Mayor's Choice Award. It represents where we are at this moment in time, standing between our history and the future, watching these historic homes in the Capitol Avenue area come back to life, with this home on Jackson Street being one of the first to go through the city's redevelopment process. Brittany captured it artistically and colorfully, highlighting the aspects of the stunning architecture that makes this home and this artwork so very unique." So congratulations, Brittany. We're so happy for you.
Thank you.
And then, if you'd like to come forward, we'd love to get a picture with council and the award.
And I'm going to mention that the Mayor's Choice, that that is the original that you'll take with you now, but the reproduction will be hanging in the mayor's office, so you can invite all your friends and family to come and look at it anytime you want here at City Hall. So congratulations again.
Oh, yeah, this is yours.
All right. And next, we get to recognize some Girl Scouts with the Silver Award certificates tonight. We always enjoy having scouts here, so we would welcome all of you forward, and this is for Troop 70300. So we're going to invite troop leader Ramona Huckstep to tell us a little bit about this, and then I have the special awards that I'll get to present to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I also wanted to recognize my co-leader, Amy Michael. Couldn't do it without her. We had three of our girls out of our troop who decided to go above and beyond and work on their Silver Award, Savannah Huckstep and Alexis Michael. They wound up working on a project that helped the Halo House, and what they did was, they worked with their church, our work, our parents' work, everywhere they could, and did a paper collection. So paper towels, toilet paper, garbage bags, everything that they said they needed, they collected for about six months, and there were hundreds and hundreds of everything that the community donated, in addition to gift cards and other things that the folks there could use, the girls that are there. And so they worked on that for almost two years. And then Brianna Chiral, she currently goes to St. Peters', and she did a tutoring project where she tutored students.
And what? What did you tutor them in?
Everything.
Everything, to help out her classmates and the younger kids. She's currently in eighth grade, going into ninth grade, so everyone there at St. Peters' that needed help, they could go to Brianna, and she wants to be a teacher at some point, so it was good experience for her as well. So that's what our troop did.
Well, thank you for what you've done to make our community better, and we appreciate all your work on your Silver Award project, and also for helping the Halo House. We have a list of all the great things that you donated to Halo, and we will look forward, sorry, to presenting to you the Silver Awards, and this is for the completion of the requirements of the Girl Scout Silver Award, and we commend you for your commitment to leadership, service to the community, and personal development. So I'll come around, and Ramona, if you want to maybe read the names, and then we'll present them, and if they can come forward, and we can get pictures.
And next up, we have Alexis Michael. It's great to recognize our scouts. I was a Girl Scout, too, growing up, never achieved the Silver Award, but very, very proud of all of your efforts. So congratulations. And item C, we have Springfield Cardinals Coal County Day at the ballpark, so I'm making an announcement this evening on behalf of Commissioner Sam Bushman, who has invited us to go. It's Saturday, June 15, at 6:10 p.m. at the Springfield, in Springfield, and it will be $60 a person, which includes a game ticket, a free tailgate, and the chartered bus, or $20 a person if you want to drive on your own for a game ticket and the tailgate. So all the proceeds go to United Way, and tickets are available from Central Travel at 634-1317. So that is Springfield Cardinals Day, Coal County Day at the ballpark. And I know Sam is really excited about it and has challenged the city to outdo what the county is doing, so we'll see if we can get more people there, but that is a fun ballgame for the United Way. And next, we have with us Diane Gillespie, who's going to tell us all the exciting things going on for Salute to Veterans, along with Britt Smith. So, welcome.
And we also have two folks from the airshow, Dayton and...
Oh, yes. Wonderful. Please, everybody, come forward, and we also have at our seats a Salute to Veterans airshow booklet with all the pertinent information, so we'd like to welcome everybody here today.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate this opportunity to come in and give you an update on the airshow that's coming up this coming weekend. The airshow is, well, we actually don't, as I've been told, we don't call it an airshow. It's a salute to veterans that happens to have an airshow. Is that about right, Dayton?
Celebration with an airshow.
Celebration with an airshow. What I'd like to do is first is show you a little promotional video that the group has put together and has been put out in the media. And I'm sure everybody heard every word of that with our wonderful sound system. There's budget time coming up that we can get a sound system and, I'm sorry. Back to the, thank you. The airshow itself, as I said, will be taking place at our airport in Jefferson City. We've set up three parking areas. One is for our wonderful volunteers to be working at it, but the one parking area is the state parking lots, which we'll be running a free shuttle to and from and dropping them off right at the gate to enter the airshow. That bus would be handicap accessible, and all the parking is pretty much handicap accessible there as well. The other parking that we have is there at is the grass field to the north of the entrance road to the airport. We can take a limited number of parking there, and obviously, since that's a grass field, that's going to be weather-dependent. We're going to have to make a call a little bit further down the week as to whether or not we're able to open that lot up or not. But regardless, we'll be able to park folks at the state parking lots, and they'll have that free shuttle that'll take them right to the front door of our wonderful airshow. The airshow itself, there's a big blue box that's there on your screen. That is where the performances will all take place, the aerial displays. When the airshow is in operation, no one other than emergency responders can be within that box, so we'll be closing Old Mocain Road, and we've notified the property owners of those fields, et cetera, so that they know that they can't be in there during the actual display, which is from 9:00 a.m. on Saturday to 4:00 p.m. on, 4:00 p.m. the same day, and that's the same time both days, on Saturdays and Sundays. But beyond that, we also have a, sorry, this is our static displays. We'll set up a ramp. As you can see, we're going to have quite a few aircraft set up on display out there. We'll also have some attendance from some of the recruiters from the different armed forces that will be there to answer questions, and also, I think they have quite a bit of fun stuff for folks to look at as well. Our emergency response, Jay Neimeyer with the Fire Department has been coordinating that, Sergeant Bethern from the Police Department, and they've done a fantastic job, and they're working in concert with Callaway County Emergency Medical Services for ambulances and transport. So it has been a true team effort throughout the city and the folks here behind. But the event's not over with the airshow on Saturday and Sunday. We're going to have a wonderful parade through downtown Jefferson City. The organizers have put together an incredible lineup that maybe, Diane, do you have that lineup with you, or?
I have two names. I know Ozzy Smith is going to be with us, the Kansas City Chiefs drum line, St. Louis Cardinals Fred Bird, and the Jefferson City Boys and Girls Club Drum Line will be joining us. So we have about 40 participants at this time.
And then, as also a part of this, we'll have many honored guests that will be at the airshow, from local folks that you all know, a retired two-star General Strotman will be one of our honored guests, and many others. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dayton, see if he has anything else that he'd like to add.
I can say it will be a, should be an outstanding display. We've got a act coming in of the start, basically to start the show early on, the Flight of the Stearman, which will, actually is World War II open cockpit aircraft that will be flying in all, formation of four, so that's one of the things to look forward to, as well as some jets.
With that, we'd be happy to answer any of the questions of the council, and appreciate the council's support in this activity.
We're very happy to have this here in Jefferson City, at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport. It's a great venue for this, so we look forward to welcoming a lot of the guests that enjoy this every year, and hopefully, a lot of new guests that will get to experience this. And most of all, we appreciate having this event for our veterans and something that they can enjoy and that we can really highlight how much we care about our veterans. Does council have any questions? And then you gave us the website, salute.org.
That's correct. Salute.org. You can get information about the goings-on, and hopefully, we're going to get some good media coverage this week as we get going. And I failed to mention even the Old Soldier Show, which goes on on Friday. There'll be aircraft up in the air on Friday. That's not necess, that isn't a public show. They have a lot of folks that they bring in from the veterans' homes and different folks from around the area, and they get their own private show, as our performers get an opportunity to familiarize themselves with the field and the conditions at our particular airport. So very excited about that, and hoping everybody can come out and have some good time at our airport.
Great. So this Saturday and Sunday, Memorial Day weekend, 9:00 to 4:00, both days, and Memorial Day Monday, the parade at 10:00, and Nicole Slusser is in charge of the parade. She said yesterday, they can still take last-minute entries. You need to call Nicole directly. And the parade route for everybody that's going to come up and see it will be similar to the Christmas parade route. They'll come up that way through, you know, from St. Peters up High Street, down Adams, so it won't be quite as long, and then down Capitol there, so we'll look forward to having people downtown. And you all are on Facebook, Memorial Day Weekend Salute to Veterans Corporation, and on that page, it also has the map that you put up there for parking and some of the other information, so if that's easy, in addition to the website, you can follow them on Facebook at that page. The parade has an event page as well, so make sure we're all following that and posting and sharing. And any other council questions? So that we can share this also, I would ask that you all come forward for a picture, and council, grab your book, and we're going to hold up our brochures, and we're going to social media this out for you as well. All right. The next item is the City of Jefferson has earned the Bicycle Friendly Community Bronze Designation from the League of American Bicyclists, so we'd like to invite our own Mr. David Bangy, and he has some special guests along with him, to present us this Bicycle Friendly Community Bronze Award.
Well, thank you. There were some reports in the newspaper, so you might have seen, you know, some of the background, but, you know, it's a process that we've been working on for a number of years. I think we first applied about seven years ago. The Campo folks actually did that for us, and then we reapplied again about three years ago, and we received an honorable mention, so we thought we were getting closer, and then with a number of things that have happened over the last couple of years, we thought we'd try again, and this time, we were successful. And so there's a lot of wonderful things that have happened in these past years. Certainly, you know, if we think back to the early 1990s and Bill Lockwood's efforts to get the Greenway Trail system started in Jefferson City, and so that was kind of the beginning, and of course, the Katy Trail was coming in at about that same time, and then you kind of fast-forward a little bit, 2008, we got the bridge across the river, which kind of, you know, helped tie Jefferson City, you know, to the Katy Trail, and so that was, you know, a big step for us. And along with that was, you know, some of the first efforts to actually do some striping on the streets to try to connect things together. So we had stripes on Fourth Street in Cottonwood on the far side of the river, and then we had stripes going up to the Capitol on this side to kind of begin to tie things together, and so that process has continued. Campo folks, again, did a lot of footwork for us and got a lot of grassroots support with their bicycle and pedestrian plan, and that kind of really set the stage for us. We have Mary Shancis with us. She's part of the Bicycle Subcommittee, and so, again, that was something else that's begun, coming out of the Environmental Quality Commission, and so in the works with Ashley Varner and the Healthy Schools, Healthy Communities has really helped spur this along as well and kept our efforts going. Diane Gillespie, I think, has just left, but the Discover Jefferson City folks, who are the foundation with them, put in a lot of the fancy bike racks that we have downtown with the JCMO logo on them, and so a lot of different people have been involved in getting this, getting us to where we are today. So just really thank those folks and really look forward to a bright future.
Great. Well, we're honored to receive this award. Did you have a comment, Councilman Mahalovich?
Yes, we did receive an email from Dr. Brent Hugh, who's with the Missouri Bicycle and Pedestrian Federation, congratulating the city, and he looks out for all things multimodal and biking and pedestrian, so it is a high honor, and silver sounds like it's not gold, but it is a, it is a, it is a great, and bronze is all a good step forward.
Right, as you, if you look at it, just quite right, there's two cities in Missouri, Columbia and St. Louis, that have silver, and so we're tied for third, so, you know, that's pretty good.
We're very honored to receive this designation. It shows all the hard work that's put into making this a bicycle-friendly community and all the businesses that have jumped on board as well, and all the people that come through and visit, and our locals that enjoy riding. And Mary, thanks for your work. I know that you did the mayor's bike ride along with me, and that was a lot of fun.
Thank you.
And also, a few of us got on our bikes this day that we received this designation and rode across the Pat Jones Bike Pedestrian Bridge. It's the first time I had ridden that on a bike.
Oh, my goodness.
And that was, it won't be my last. I really enjoyed it, even maneuvering the narrow walkway. It really is not hard at all. I would encourage everybody to get on a bike, and so many people do that. As I walk across there, people are constantly biking past me, so I realize I've been missing out, so this kind of opened my eyes to connecting to the Katy Trail and everything else that we have here in Jefferson City. So any other council comments about this?
It'd be a wonderful way to get to the airshow.
Yes, it would be, exactly. So we'll get, if you two would come forward, we'll get a picture, and if council would come up behind me as well, and Rick, why don't you come forward, since you rode, you rode in that, you rode the bridge with us, so. The bravest councilman to ride. Item A is Bill 2019-6.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing the name of West Miller Street Rear to Courtney Way.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This request is coming to the council through the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was originated by city staff. Staff learned that three of the, there's three houses that face east, excuse me, West Miller Street Rear, and those three have had issues with deliveries with the Postal Service and other folks, and were concerned they may have 911 issues down the road. So staff initiated this request. It would basically rename the street to Courtney Way. Courtney Way recognizes the old JCD distributor building, which is actually Shoe Factory, originally named the Courtney Shoe Factory, so it's sort of honoring some of the local history. The Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval. They did this April 11, eight to zero. The fiscal impact would be limited to updating some of the GIS maps, some of the addresses, and putting up a couple of street signs. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing process. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 2019-6? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing process, and we will take up 2019-6. Any council deliberation? Okay. At this time, we'll take this up. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater, Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna, Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather, Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes. 2019-7.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana facilities.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This would be a bill that changes the zoning text to include marijuana facilities. Back in November, the state constitution was changed. There's four types of facilities, cultivation, where they can grow the medical marijuana, testing facilities, where they test it, infusion, product manufacturing, where they can extract oils and put it in food substances and things like that. And then the fourth one is dispensary, retail. This bill is not addressing the retail aspect of those four categories, but the first three. We're basically mirroring the state regulations...
All right. Item five, we have public hearings. Item A is Bill 2019-6.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing the name of West Miller Street Rear to Courtney Way.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This request is coming to the council through the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was originated by city staff. Staff learned that three of the, there's three houses that face east, excuse me, West Miller Street Rear. And those three have had issues with deliveries with the Postal Service and other folks and were concerned they may have 911 issues down the road. So staff initiated this request. It would basically rename the street to Courtney Way. Courtney Way recognizes the old JCD distributor building, which is actually Shoe Factory, originally named the Courtney Shoe Factory. So it's sort of honoring some of the local history. The Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval. They did this April 11th, eight to zero. The fiscal impact would be limited to updating some of the GIS maps, some of the addresses, and putting up a couple of street signs. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing process. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 2019-6? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing process and we will take up 2019-6. Any council deliberation? Okay. At this time, we'll take this up. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater, Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna, Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather, Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Bill passes. 2019-7.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana facilities.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This would be a bill that changes the zoning text to include marijuana facilities. Back in November, the state constitution was changed. There's four types of facilities, cultivation where they can grow the medical marijuana, testing facilities where they test it, infusion, product manufacturing where they can extract oils and put it in food substances and things like that. And then the fourth one is dispensary, retail. This bill is not addressing the retail aspect of those four categories, but the first three. We're basically mirroring the state regulations that the Health and Senior Services Department's putting together. Those aren't final yet. They have been a moving target. I believe they'll be final June 4th, but we have been keeping up with changes. Basically, what we're recommending through the Planning and Zoning Commission is to allow these facilities, just those three, in the light industrial M1 or the general industrial M2 zoning districts. There's also a provision that would limit the distance to no closer than 1,000 feet walking distance from the marijuana facility to either a church, daycare, elementary or secondary school. So the way that would work, if there's a marijuana facility, they would take a look at the external wall closest to that school, for example, and how far would someone have to walk to go from that wall to the property line of the school. And then there's a similar condition for if they're in sort of a multi-tenant situation. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this. There was one comment made, and that was basically to the Planning and Zoning Commission and carried on to the council here. Please do not reduce the restrictions that have been recommended. Do not make them more lax, but keep them where they are, which is mirroring the state regulations that are currently being proposed. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, eight to zero, in their Planning and Zoning meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, any questions at this time? Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing portion. Would anyone like to speak on Bill 2019-7? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and we'll take up the bill. Is there any council deliberation?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I'd say hi to my two colleagues on the right of me. Hey, how y'all doing? And then also, I know this is a very important topic and I know that we're missing several of the council members. So I would like to place this on the informal calendar until we have more members from the council to have a conversation about this.
Okay. So the sponsor has asked to put this on the informal. Any objections to that? So it looks like we'll have it on the informal. So, thank you. And I might point out that to our city councillor, that this would not change since the public hearings already happened. There wouldn't be a hearing that would be taken up as a bill pending at the next meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Item six, appointments by the mayor. Mrs. Stroke.
Thank you. We have a number of appointments and reappointments this month. To the Cultural Arts Commission, we have Natalie Eichhoff. To the Jefferson City Industrial Development Authority, we have Dan Westhuse, Bob Gilbert, Hank Voight, Bernie Thechtel, Larry Vincent, Beth Utrick, and Diane Gillespie. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Andre Grinstone, Larry Henry, and Stu Murphy. To Planning and Zoning Commission, we have Bunny Tricky Cotton, Hank Voight, and Penny Quigg, and Emily Fretwell. And to the Tax Increment Finance, we have Anissa Manus and Eric Struff.
Councilman Mahalovich.
We have an asterisk by Chris Yarnell, requiring two-thirds majority. I don't believe we have enough to have a two-thirds majority. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Therefore, I would either suggest we remove his name so we can vote on it at the next council meeting. That'd be amendment to remove Chris Yarnell's name till the next council meeting.
Councilman Hussey.
Just make your motion to include striking.
I move to remove Chris Yarnell from today's vote and put it on the next meeting.
While approving the rest of the slate?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. There are none this evening. And item eight, announcements. Are there any committee announcements this evening for upcoming committee meetings? And you can see our calendar at JeffersonCityMo.gov for a complete list of upcoming meetings. Item B, the Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Moment. At the last meeting, I reminded everyone to follow us on Twitter, @Missouri2021. And this time, I'm going to encourage everyone to get your phones out and follow the page on Facebook. They post almost daily updates of what's going on across the state for the bicentennial in 2021. Item C, we have an announcement by Chief Schofield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We're very excited to present to you and to the public on Wednesday, this Wednesday at 4:00. The address is 2935. That'll be the location of new fire station number two. Also that day, we'll have three mascots there, not just Fire Pup, but also Ready Fox from the Police Department and a very special guest mascot from across the street, Clifford the Big Red Dog is also going to make his way over to the new fire station for the grand opening. So there will also be a ribbon cutting of sorts, although there'll be a special twist on that. You'll have to just come to see what that's all about. And then finally, I would say there'll be another very special announcement of a joint project at, are you guys laughing at Clifford the Big Red Dog? No. A very special announcement of something else that's happening there on the property, it's a joint partnership between Public Works, Parks, and the Fire Department. So it's a city project. Just wanted to put that out there. We're really excited to be able to do something else with that property as well, and we'll make that announcement on Wednesday. Wednesday, 4:00, 2935, East McCarty Street, new fire station number two.
Great. We're looking forward to that. And I'll give my announcements. I did want to thank our Public Safety Chair, Carlos Graham, who attended the stamp unveiling at the Capitol for the stamp honoring our first responders. And is there anything you'd like to announce about that?
It was a wonderful event, a great way to recognize our first responders, and I'm glad I was able to be a part of that celebration. So I know that Captain Bob Clark was there as well, too. So, but thank those men and women for what they do each and every day. So, and thank you for inviting me as well, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. It's great to see a stamp honoring our first responders. And then just today, we had a special event at the, at Lomans Landing that honors immigrants and our heritage. So the statue that was dedicated today is called the Immigrants Arriving Statue and talks about the important role of our early settlers to the state of Missouri. So I would encourage you to take a moment next time you're there and view the statue. And there's an interactive, you can press the screen and learn and see pictures about it. The Rotary Groups in town sponsored this and really got behind this and donated and decided they wanted to do something that would honor our heritage. And we also had Missouri Humanities Council there celebrating our German heritage to the community. So, and our own city administrator, Kroll, is the president of the Rotary Club of Jefferson City and made a good presentation along with Mr. Dale Dearhoff. So anything to add about that event?
You summed it up great. Appreciate you being there. And we had various dignitaries. And I also noted that there's been a lot of TV and newspaper coverage, including today.
Yes, we're glad to see that. So I really encourage council and the public to check that out. It's very educational and informative. And any other announcements?
Mayor Roboto.
Yes, Councilman Hensley.
Point of order, if you will. Completely spontaneously.
Now get into the mic. They said, "Come sail away, come sail away, come sail away with me. Come sail away, come sail away, come sail away with me."
Come on.
"Come sail away, come sail away, come sail away with me. Come sail away, come sail away, come sail away with me. Down by the river in Jeff City Mo."
That's my part.
Oh, my gosh. Get over here. We got to get a selfie with that guitar.
Oh, Christ.
We just, we have to. I can't help it. It's done. You wonder why everybody's gone this meeting.
Hold on. There we go.
I'm shocked at you two over there.
Okay.
Rick, what's your talent? Thank God Ron's not here.
Yeah, that's right. It's a good, we can thank Ron for missing the meeting, so I have a place for guitar. So, Councilman Hensley, you have some explaining to do. You have really been holding out on us with this talent.
Well, it's unlimited talent, as we could, as we could see from the intro to the chorus and pretty much the entire rest of the performance. But thank you for the opportunity to share this important announcement about a great event coming to town. Would you care to tell us more?
Absolutely. I can't quite say it as good as you did, coming around the room with that amazing serenade. But the Concert Inside the Walls is Saturday, June 1st, so we hope everybody has their tickets. If not, there are still some available at concertinsidethewalls.com. And it's our fourth annual concert that we've had there. And as you can tell from that serenade, it will be Dennis DeYoung and the music of Styx, although you give him a run for his money, Councilman Hensley.
I'm going to have to jump in. Mr. DeYoung is a multiple Grammy Award winner, and it's nice of you to say.
So if one of the guitarists doesn't show up, we will give you a call.
There are some really good guitarists in town, and I'm sure they'd be happy to jump on stage. And I would only ask the small favor of anyone interested in posting that video, I mean, right up to like the one-minute mark would be great. And then probably anywhere starting after about the 1:15 mark would also be fine when everyone else jumped in. But, so feel free to edit. You know, that'd be great. So thanks so much.
We won't even say that this meeting can be streamed worldwide, so just no stress there, John. But the good thing is, we are getting really close. We are less than two weeks out from this, and it is a really cool venue. It is a great way to highlight the penitentiary. The Upper Yard is an amazing venue for a concert. If you have, if you've been there, you know what I'm talking about. If you have not been to a Concert Inside the Walls, I highly, highly recommend it. And we're doing it earlier this year. We're doing it in June, so June 1st instead of with the July 4th weekend, because people requested that, there's so much going on during July 4th already. They wanted it a little bit sooner so people could really enjoy the concert. And changing it up, they, people asked for the kind of rock and roll and the 80s rock that's so popular, so we're going to bring that this year. And so far, people have been really, really excited about it. So tickets are available for the concert. You can also buy tickets to eat inside the walls that night. And this year, you can eat like a prisoner, but the food's better, donated by prison brews. And they are having some mini prison tours during the dinner as well. So that's something new that we're adding this year in response to people kind of wanting to have a little sneak peek while they're in there in the prison anyways. So we're really shaking it up there in the prison and yes, look forward to seeing you all there. Mayor Roboto will be there and look forward to everybody else coming there, too. So, any other announcements on that note? Can anybody top John? Probably not? Okay. So now we will move on to Carolyn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council as whole. Let me just say, I think I may have to borrow your guitar one of these days. I cannot play it as well, but I can wing my way to playing. I will work on something and make a presentation.
A duo.
Absolutely. However, school is out for the summer. However, summer school starts on the 28th, which is next week. And I'm excited that summer school is starting, but I'm enjoying the quiet campers at the moment. And also, our track team, the Blue Tigers, men's and women's track and field team, they just left for Texas. They're heading off to Nationals. So I would encourage everybody, if you can, I know it's, driving to Texas is a couple of hours off, but cheer them on while you're here. I believe they'll be streaming all the events. I'm not sure where and how, but when I find out, I will send it to you, Madam Mayor, and maybe you can share it out with the rest of council and the community. But it is important, I think it's important to, despite the fact that they are far away, knowing that we are cheering them on here at home makes a difference. Thank you.
Yes, it does. I'd be happy to share that when I get that from you. Thank you, Ms. Wanjaro. And did your finals go well for you this year? Good. And your mic's off, but I wanted to ask you, will you be here then for summer school?
I do not have summer school. However, I am working. I work in the president's office, so I get to see Mr. Graham almost all the time.
So you'll still be in Jefferson City?
Yes, I will be in Jefferson City.
Great. Well, we would look forward to having you continue to come to our meetings, then.
Absolutely.
We're glad to have you here, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And item 10, presentations from the gallery. We have no one signed up this evening, so we'll move on to item 11, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Madam Mahalovich? Did you have a question or a? So we have the motion and second, and I'll call on Mahalovich.
I just want to be sure that everybody notes on their calendar that this, the budget schedule will start July 22nd, excuse me, yeah, 22nd, and go every Monday and Thursday from that point on until we have the budget approved. So be sure to put that down in your calendars, starting July 22nd.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on consent? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2019-12.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing the Double Eagle Court right-of-way and all easements dedicated with the plat of double eagle subdivision.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As Clark indicated, this would vacate the easements and right-of-way for the double eagle subdivision. Some years ago, a small, almost Dakota Sec, not quite, was platted as part of a potential development. That development never happened. The adjoining property owner did acquire the property and wishes to vacate the subdivision and just incorporate it as part of their lot.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. 2019-13.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19, Motor Vehicles and Traffic by Replacing Yield Signs with Stop Signs at Southern Air Drive and Royal Air Drive Before Entering Bell Air Drive.
Mr. Marash.
Yeah, thank you. Another, almost a cleanup on this one as well. Some citizens of the area requested the yield signs go to stop signs at these intersections and discussed at the Transportation and Traffic Commission meeting and recommended approval.
Any questions? All right. Thanks. 2019-14.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19, Motor Vehicles and Traffic by Adding a Stop Sign to Net Hats Drive Before Entering Lewis Drive, Lewis Circle.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Another item cleanup requested by a citizen. This intersection never had a traffic control stop sign or yield either way, and requested through the Transportation and Traffic Commission that a stop sign be added there.
Any questions? All right. Thanks. And 2019-15.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by Modifying the Side Parking Removal on Lee Street Between Morrow Drive and a .340 feet east of Morrow Drive.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, the council acted to remove parking on one side of the street on Lee Drive. Since then, some residents of the area asked that it be reconsidered, and so the Transportation and Traffic Commission took this back up, and this is somewhat of a compromise. And so it is removed, parking is removed on the street throughout the length of it. However, it flip-flops sides about halfway down, seemed to be an acceptable compromise for those living in the area, and they recommended approval to the council.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Marash.
Thank you.
Item 13, bills pending, 2019-4.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Designating 204 East High Street as a Local Historic Landmark.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The property owner of 204 East High Street, which is also known as the Exchange Bank Building, has nominated their property through the Historic Preservation Commission the Historic Preservation Commission as a local historic landmark, um, this, this building was actually built initially in 1865, then rebuilt in 1899, I believe, um, the property owner, uh, has, has participated in many, many, uh, city programs, facade improvement program, and the, uh, recognition, uh, as a historic, uh, contributing, uh, building to the community, uh, would be reinforced by, uh, designating it as a local historic landmark, and with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ward.
Um, it's my understanding that this was postponed, um, moved to tonight due to my absence at the last meeting, I do apologize for that, um, I believe this building is very deserving of designation, um, and the Historic Preservation Commission voted unanimously to, uh, make it a, a local landmark, and, uh, city staff, planning and, um, protective services also agrees, uh, with that vote, um, however, due to the absence of several, uh, council members, um, I would also like to, to table this to, to next council meeting.
Okay, so this will be placed on the informal calendar, any further comments? Okay, thank you, we've taken up number six and seven, now on to 2019-8.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Highland Village, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, uh, the Highland Village, uh, final plat subdivision is basically the old St. Mary's site, um, it is approximately seven and a half acres, uh, they are planning to divide it up into seven lots, um, as I mentioned, a couple weeks ago, they were going to go to the Board of Adjustment for a couple variance cases, those are granted, so that, those are not an issue, those were basically a setback in permitting a lot without any, uh, street frontage, um, basically, the, uh, parking garage that is still there now, the red brick building, are on two separate lots, um, one lot would actually be a private drive extending from the ramps from, uh, US 54, uh, sort of across the street bisecting the property up to Bolivar, and then, two more lots, uh, sort of along the frontage of, uh, Missouri Boulevard, and, uh, two sort of in, in the middle, um, with that, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommends this unanimously to the City Council for approval.
Any questions? Thank you, any deliberation? Uh, roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna, Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather, Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman, Fitzwater.
Bill passes. 2019-9.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending City Code, Chapter 8 Buildings and Building Regulations by repla, replacing portions of Sections 8-3 Amendments to the National Electrical Code 2014, Section 8-5 Amendments to the 2015 International Plumbing Code, and the PXY Schedule of Administrative Fees, Permits, Licenses, and Other Charges.
Mr. Burkhart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, as introduced last, at the last council meeting, this modifies some of the licensing requirements for, uh, electrical contractors and also plumbing contractors, both will have general liability insurance requirements added, and also, the licenses, individual licenses will now be, be renewable, uh, they were issued for life before, now every three years, they will be renewed, also, uh, we clarified somewhat of what the licensed plumbing contractor can do, there was partially an issue with excavators claiming some of the work, and that caused us some, um, well, issues that we didn't want to face because of existing contracts, also increased the surety bond requirements for plumbers that working in right-of-way from 2000 to 5000, it was mainly cause of an adjustment for inflation, and also, there was some issue about clarification of what, uh, a master licenser, uh, for a plumber holder would, would require a journeyman's license, so that was clarified within the city code, then also, we added a, a nominal fee for this license renewal, it'd be $30 every three years, and that's mainly just to cover our administrative costs, so we would, I'm guessing about maybe $2,000 that we would get every three years for license renewal for plumbers, and then, $2,000 for, for electricians, so, with that, is there any questions?
Thank you, any questions, Councilman Mahalovich?
Um, so now we're gonna be able to better understand how many contractors we have working in the city?
That's the, the hope, we'll be able to do that.
Is this electronic database of, of names?
Currently, we have them listed in Springbrook, which is the financial database, which also has business licenses, and so we share that with the business office here, so we list all individual contractors and also, uh, license holders.
So, when I've served on those boards, we had a card catalog system, but we've got rid of that, so we now have them electronically available.
Yes, but we still don't know who's working in the area, and unfortunately, if they're six feet under, it's, uh, we don't have, uh, a true count of active practicing electricians and plumbers in the area, we have a general big number, but I do know that some plumbers and electricians have passed, that took their master licenses with them to the grave, or they left the area, we, we don't have current data, we just have what was issued originally.
Good, um, and the, the boards, both boards have voted, uh, in favor of this, and so has the bill sponsor, uh, was supportive.
Yes, and we brought it up through the Public Works and Planning Committee, we mailed it out to all 70 odd electrical contractors, and all 40 odd plumbing contractors, and then plus, I have my own, uh, email, those stakeholders with, for design and construction services here, there's 100 plus, and we did not receive any negative comments, just positive.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna, Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather, Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman, Fitzwater, Graham.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-10.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for assistance with operating expenses for the air traffic control tower at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of November 1st, 2018 through October 31st, 2019.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, as Clerk indicated, this is an agreement to help us with, uh, defer some of our costs at the airport tower, basically, we have a grant, an operating grant, uh, for a contract tower, costs a little over $80,000, so, uh, this would help with about half of that, and then also, it includes some funds for utilities, et cetera, we can also get reimbursed 50% of those, so, up to $50,000, so, glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, any questions or deliberation? Councilman Mahalovich?
Uh, I just wanna say that, uh, I'm anxiously waiting for our new, uh, airport, uh, master plan, which case will, uh, recommend, uh, a tower to be placed in a different location, and, and I hope we can come up with the funding for a new tower, uh, I have visited the tower, and it is not, um, I, I, it's hard to find it really, an adjective to describe it.
Treehouse.
Yes, uh, and, and the working conditions could be much improved by, by the tower employees, so, if, if, if you don't trust my, my evaluation of it, I invite you to, to go and, and visit the tower, it's a, it's kind of amazing operation, we are the, what busiest airport in Missouri, it's the third or fourth.
Third or fourth, I was gonna say.
Tower-wise, so, we have a lot of tower traffic, so, but, um, and, and sore need of upgrading.
Absolutely.
They have a watermark of where the flood was, and, uh, their would, equipment would be underwater, uh, a, a fair majority of that, but, anyway, I just offer that as a comment.
Thank you, any further comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna, Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather, Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman, Fitzwater, Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-11.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Jefferson Asphalt Company in the amount of $909,116.55 for the 2019 mill and overlay project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, as Clerk indicated, this is our annual mill and overlay contract, just over $900,000 of work, uh, we did receive two bids this year, and typically, we've been receiving one bid, so, uh, but Jefferson Asphalt was the low bid for this project, and, uh, we'd recommend award.
Thanks, any questions? Councilman Graham?
I'd go ahead and give the floor to Councilman Mahalovich.
I'm sorry, but I have to bring up the fact that I had a citizen comment with regard to the concern that we just, with the current funding, we just do not get enough done in any one year, uh, despite the herculean efforts of our, of our, uh, Public Works Department, still, you can see, for three years out, we still have overlay projects that still are on the list that just can't get to in any one given year, so, uh, we had a citizen ask that we bring that forward to, to suggest that we try to find funding, um, uh, greater funding for overlay projects, and, and I, and I really super, uh, appreciate, uh, Public Works for, uh, going to do a more, um, scientific evaluation of our overlay needs, so I think the list, in a way, should go away with, with, in, in a sense, and be, um, based on kinda what your findings would be.
Correct, yeah, if you were gonna ask me that question, I was gonna say, uh, we are finishing that, uh, electronic, uh, based on electronic survey, if you will, or, uh, GPS-type survey of all the streets in Jefferson City, they'll have a condition rating, um, by a piece of equipment, that, uh, so that we'll be able to compare each street independently of one another, and, um, and then the council can look at what it would take, uh, on an annual funding basis a little better, to, uh, to come out of that issue, they have some actual real data.
That's very much appreciated, I know we've had projects on list to kind of, to, to give people hope, but, and in fact, some of that was not based on the science as much as the need, uh, that, that would keep coming up each year, and, and I've traveled some of the roads that I've complained about, and, and I hope we can do some of the, a portion of those roads, but, I would agree that not the entire stretches that I've complained about require the overlay of the full stretch, so, uh, I look forward to those findings.
Certainly.
And Councilman Graham?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I wanna say, uh, first of all, thank you to city staff for providing, uh, this list for us, uh, and, as the fourth ward representative, I'm very concerned about this, this list, uh, the 2019 and the 2020 list, uh, I know that last year, uh, we had a conversation and we had a visit over in the area of the Georgetown area, and I thought it was gonna be on the 2019 list, and as I look at this list, it's not on there, uh, neither is it on the 2020 list, uh, and I think that we all can agree that that street and that area is tore up, I know we did some patchwork to that area last year, uh, and I thought that we was gonna put it on the 2019 overlay list, uh, I see now that we have Gettysburg Place on that list, which I'm not saying that it should not be, uh, and when I look at 2020 list, uh, the areas in which we're going to be, uh, doing the overlay, it's in that same area, so I am very concerned with this list, I do not support this, um, uh, so, I don't know what we can do, uh, but, uh, like I said, I'm not saying Gettysburg doesn't need it, but I do know that over in the Georgetown area, uh, the Cambridge Circle and all of that, there's some very serious concerns over there, and I just can't sit here and be like, I, I agree with this, when I, when I, when I don't, uh, so, I don't know what we can do, uh, but I think we need to relook, speaking from the fourth ward, um, this one street that we have, and then in 2020, we're doing the other streets in that same area, I'm very concerned with that.
Uh, and I, I can try to clarify a little bit, uh, and I do recall, uh, we did some work in that Georgetown area, uh, did some patching, uh, those are concrete streets, and not unlike many concrete streets in other parts of the city, pretty bad shape, uh, sometimes, uh, we, in the past, we've tried to overlay those, it's, once we get in that cycle, it's, uh, you have to do them more often, so we do try to patch them and keep them concrete as long as possible, in that particular Georgetown area, we're trying to, a new product that MoDOT has been utilizing, um, and we, we patched it with asphalt for now, but we will go back and use this other product, uh, very much, uh, you'll see it, uh, right now, out on our, um, uh, High Street Vi-Duc project, we patched some of those, it's a concrete-looking material, so it'll blend a little better, uh, and so we'd like to go back and try that on those concrete streets, it's something we're gonna get ready to do on Scenic Drive, just for everybody else's information, I met some councilmen there as well, uh, they have similar concerns on Scenic Drive, and it is in rough shape, um, other areas, Constitution, some of those streets over there are very bad shape, uh, we'd certainly like to patch and repair, overlay, whatever, all the streets that are needed in town at all at once, but, limited funding, we have to make some, try to, you know, there's kind of a methodology we've been going through, but I think this, this Anderson Engineering, uh, project will come out very shortly, and then we'll be able to compare streets to one another, traffic volume, and those kinda things, and so we do the best we can, but certainly, the council can change the list if they wanted to, but that was our best, best take that we could do with it.
So, I believe I heard you say that there is some type of material that's being used around the city, so it has something?
Right, we're just getting into it, uh, and we're starting on Scenic, but, uh, that Georgetown area, we'll get the product as well.
Will that be in 2019?
Uh, we hope to do it yet this year, it's very labor-intensive, the good part about this is, uh, the material is, uh, not very expensive, it's just very labor-intensive, although, over in that area in Georgetown, we've already, uh, cut out the sections that need the material, so it'll go a little quicker once we get there.
Yes, I know that, it's, it's some serious concerns over in that, in that area, um, and I was just shocked to, to not see them on there, and then, like I say, even looking at the 2020 list, the nominal list, and I know that we had a meeting, um, and, and talked to those residents over there, so, like I said, I'm, I do not support this, this list.
Councilman Hussey?
Well, Councilman Graham, I think what Mr. Marash is communicating is that, that the product he's describing that's gonna take care of Georgetown, it, like, Georgetown wouldn't appear on the overlay list, because that's not the fix to take care of that particular issue.
Well, that's our hope, that this will take care of that issue, and, and like, and other, like, concrete streets.
And, and so, the fix that's coming is not something that would show up on this particular list, because this is a very specific bid related to asphalt work, correct?
Correct.
I, I appreciate that, Councilman, and, uh, but I think it was also stated that Scenic Drive is in the same shape as the area that's in Cambridge and Georgetown, but Scenic Drive is on the 2019 street overlay list as well.
Well, a portion of that, that is asphalt is on there, the portion that's concrete is, is not on the list.
So, I would caution you to say, you could vote no and, and fail this tonight, and the same list would come back up, and Georgetown would still not appear on that list, because the, the fix from city staff to rectify that street is not something that would appear on this particular contract, because this is not the product to use on it.
Where would that appear, Councilman, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Marash, where would that appear? Would that ever come to us for approval?
No, it would, it's an internal process, you know, eternal fix we're proposing for that particular street.
And you can give Councilman Graham some assurance that that would happen?
We hope to do it yet this year.
And, and, uh, Councilman, uh, Hussey, I was, I was saying that I do not support, I'm gonna vote for, because certainly I want something, something is better than nothing, but I am addressing my disconcern about the streets in which we talked about not being on the list, I'm gonna vote yes, but I don't agree with it.
Well, I guess that, I guess I just wanna clarify that the, Georgetown would not appear on this particular list, ever, if that's the fix that's gonna be used, because this list is directly related to the bid regarding an asphalt fix to streets, and staff has communicated that's not the fix for Georgetown, right?
Yes, and I, I don't wanna go back and forth, but this is the first time I'm hearing of this new product that's gonna go over the Georgetown area, you may have heard about it, but this is my first time hearing about it.
Perhaps at an upcoming public works meeting, you could...
And it wouldn't be a full overlay, I gotta be clear, it's talking about patching the concrete streets back and keeping them concrete.
Maybe, in the, at another time, you could get some more detailed information about that process, so that the fourth ward and, and other council members too, but especially knowing it's going to be in two different areas of the city, that, that council members, maybe at an upcoming public works meeting, it could be touched on, so that there's some knowledge about that, perhaps, okay, any further, uh, comments? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Kimna, Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather, Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman, Fitzwater, Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Bill passes. Nothing on the informal, no resolutions, item 16, presentations... Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. I do notice that we had a former councilman walk in, Mr. Larry Henry, and you're welcome to come to the podium. I did want to mention that, yeah, you're, you're kind of, wait, we've got some, did you hear that we had some of these things tonight?
Coming to the podium, look, over there.
That's what you're doing here. Your old seat is almost. And we, we did recently, earlier in the meeting, approve you on our Parks and Recreation Commission, but I understand that you, you may not be able to fulfill that duty.
Yes, unfortunately, I, I have taken the job in Flagstaff, Arizona, so I'll be moving actually June the 11th. So I will have to, I won't be able to take that position on the, on the Parks and Rec Commission, but I appreciate the approval though from everyone else, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate your service to the city. Not only is a council member, but you have always been very involved in engaging our youth. You've sponsored different events in town and gone out of your way to be very visible and focused on helping our community in many, many ways. So you will be greatly missed. So I'm sad to hear you're leaving, but I'm also happy about this opportunity for you.
Thank you. And ironically, we just had our CASA golf tournament out at the country club, so that's where I was.
Ah.
And so I had to, I'm just finishing up on that board as, on the CASA board as well, so, so I'm pretty full from fried chicken right now. We just had, had a, had a good dinner after the golf tournament, so.
Well, we appreciate you coming and know that, that you do have, you had our unanimous, for the few that are here, unanimous approval, but understanding that if you're not able to serve, we will simply appoint a new person, and it won't affect anything. The current commission will continue to operate until a replacement is, is put in place regardless of what happened this evening, but we, we do appreciate your service and willingness to serve if you had, didn't have this other opportunity come up for you.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, everyone.
Does council have any questions? Yes.
Thanks, thanks.
Congratulations to you.
Appreciate that, thank you, thank you. This was not supposed to happen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for your service.
Absolutely.
And good luck to you.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Schreiber?
[laughing]
Oh, maybe, I hear a motion, is there a second?
I mean, I've signed the contract already, so I'm not sure.
I view this as now I've got a vacation home in Flagstaff, Arizona, so.
Okay, there you go.
There you go.
Well, I hope you...
Plenty of resorts up their way.
They're very lucky, and I hope you get involved there. Maybe you'll be a council person there, but whatever you do, best wishes for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So item, where are we at on, we did, let's see, 16. So item 17, and I did want to mention a couple of unfinished items. During announcements, I, I forgot to mention that there is an MSP Community Partners Meeting on May 31st, and if anyone heard me on the radio yesterday, I announced that it was this Friday, but it's next Friday. So Memorial Day weekend has completely thrown my schedule that's in my mind totally off of what Friday is which Friday. So if you heard that, that was wrong, it's actually the 31st at 9:30. So our chair is Councilman Schreiber. And I also don't remember if I announced the Mayor's Golf Tournament. I think, did I say that? Okay, because that's also May 31st. So May 31st just left my mind there, but Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament's the 13th Annual, and Mayor Landworth started that, and it is at Oak Hills. And we do have police and fire that are stepping up, so we hope that we have others that are interested and participating as well. Let me know, either myself or John Landworth, if anybody would like to participate in that golf tournament. So at this time, we're on number 17, council and staff discussion of presentation topics. We'll start with item A, a 200 East High Street update. Mr. Sanders?
Madam Mayor, Larry has assembled a lengthy timeline of events that led us up to today, and he can, I turn it over to him to kind of give a brief 12, 13-point overview of the first three pages of this document, and then we could answer any questions as we go, or give more details on those, but I'm going to let Larry handle it from here.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Burkhart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In your packets, you had a three-page document that listed 48 different bullet points, and also at least a 64-page document showing all the backup correspondence that occurred with this event. I'll start at the very beginning. June 7th is when we had, experienced a partial failure. I would like to commend the Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works for the coordination effort that was achieved. That was quite an undertaking that day, and something unfortunately I'll never forget. But just jumping down to 48 bullets, I listed about a dozen. That was the first one, June 7th. June 13th, I'm just calling it out, that the insurance company for 200 East High had a structural engineer visit the site. June 29th, a second insurance structural engineer visited the site. And then on July 20th, we had the insurance estimator visit the site, and that's when it was discovered that was not a dual wall, and that was a sheer party wall between 200 and 202. So, and shortly thereafter, we received a decision from the owner of 200 East High to demolish 200, jumping all the way to October 8th because of various correspondence. A letter was sent to 200, 202, and 204 East High. The offer, the letter offered options for the owners, and also mediation by city staff. October 15th, we sent a notice to the owner of 200 East High in Nyadark to vacate or repair, to, to vacate and to repair or demolish 200 East High. That was out of the Dangerous Building Code. The same day, we sent a notice from the Dangerous Building Code to the owner of 202 to vacate the premises because of the dangerous building situation. October 18th, the buildings again were inspected by a structural engineer that was retained by the city, and also at that time, 202 East High to determine the condition of the buildings. And later, well, within a few weeks after that, on November 2nd, we met with that structural engineer and owners of 200, 202, and 204 to discuss options of what they could do as far as abatement and/or repair, demolish, but anyways, they had their options discussed with them. After that meeting on November 9th, a revised notice was sent to the owners of 202 East High. It was expanded from the previous order to include repair or demolish, and they were to repair or demolish by January 31st. January 15th, we had a signed findings of fact and conclusions of law that was signed by the owner of 200 East High agreeing to demolish the building, but that was 60 days after the findings of fact was issued for 202. On March 15th, that's when Chief Schrader issued his findings of fact and conclusions of law that confirmed the order for demolition or repair of 202 East High. After that, I will have to ask Mr. Moleman for any type of clarification or points as far as any type of legal action. It was after that date.
Sure. The, the Webergs filed a suit seeking judicial review of the Chief Schrader's order. That case was filed on March 22nd. The city filed a motion to dismiss to that lawsuit shortly thereafter, and on April 4th, the, the Webergs filed an amended lawsuit against the city for, also for judicial review. The city filed a motion to dismiss on that case as well. As a result of that, the circuit court struck the Webergs' motion for de novo review and stipulated that the case is limited to administrative review, and required that the parties submit the case on briefs. And so as of May 13th, the parties have submitted briefs to the circuit court. The judge has entered into the scheduling order, a date on June 3rd, that the court will be prepared to review the case and hopefully submit a decision shortly after that. I can also tell you that there was a motion for summary judgment last week that was heard by Judge Joyce up at the circuit court on the case between Nyadark Properties LLC and the Webergs. She indicated in that hearing that she would be making a decision on that case between the two private parties and the case between the city and the Webergs simultaneously. So, so that will be hopefully in early June that she will make those two decisions where we have a much clearer understanding of the legal issues that, that are essentially tying up this case at this time. So that is the, a brief history of the, of the lawsuits that are going on right now.
Thank you for those updates. Does council have any questions? Councilman Graham?
Thank you for, for the update, both of you all. Thank you so much. I know that it's tied up in legal, and I respect that. So is it secured enough now that no one can get hurt in that area? I know we've got some bad weather moving in here tomorrow and things like that, so what happens? Who's responsible if, if someone gets, gets injured in a brick that happens to, another brick falls off, or anything happens, a fly? Who, who's responsible? The city?
Right.
Or the two people?
Um, so, there is, there is a barrier constructed around the affected area of 200, and that was designed, engineered, and I believe stamped by an engineer. Is that correct? It was at least designed.
Yeah, it was close, it was designed.
It was designed by an engineer to contain any further damage fallout from that, from 200. And so it was, it was designed to protect from further damage. So if there was a catastrophic failure of the rest of the building, the current barriers that are up would protect the traveling public from, from, from debris. So while I can't say that is 100%, you know, that's going to prevent everything, it was designed to be preventative for injuries to the traveling public and the people that, you know, travel on, on High Street and on, on Madison. If in the event that, that there were some type of injury or something like that that were to occur, I believe that the liability would fall to the property owners. The city is not a guarantor of other people's property, and it is up to other people to make sure that their buildings are safe and that they are not harmful to the public. And when the city is entering into abatement procedures, we don't become a guarantor of those buildings. It is still up to those people to make sure their buildings are safe. And so if there were some type of injury, God forbid, the liability would, would, would fall to those property owners, and the city would seek to avoid any type of liability if, if someone were to drag the city into a, into a lawsuit. We would defend that vigorously, saying our position would be that it's not, it's not the city's responsibility to ensure that private buildings are maintained appropriately as, as a guarantor against injury. And so I think we are at as good of a position currently, while it is, no one will, will deny that, that, that that building is unsightly, it is as secure as we can reasonably require it to be while also providing a, the most limited impact on pedestrian and vehicular traffic in that area.
Let me just add, if it fails, it'll fail towards Madison. And that's why the barriers are just on Madison. And that was determined by a structural engineer that was retained by us, and just looking at the construction, it'll fail towards Madison. Never mind what liability says, it, it's going to fall, and it shouldn't hurt anybody.
And I guess that was my question, since we retained them, what responsibility do we play in it since we were the one who retained the company, or am I wrong?
Well, that's what Mr. Moleman just kind of explained, that we're doing the best that we can with the information that's available to us to protect the public. And that's why half the street of, of Madison is blocked off, and in fact, Matt?
Yeah, the, the engineer that initially gave us the sketch was the building owners and contractor retained them. I think our engineer later that we retained verified that he felt comfortable with that solution, is what I recall.
And you went a little bit further than what was recommended too?
Correct.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Two things. The note on November 7th, what is that supposed to communicate to us?
After the meeting with the owners, it was quite evident that the, the owners would not come to some type of solution, mutual solution. And so the engineer that we retained, Dave Weber with Allstate, is a very, how can I say, he's a very good structural forensic engineer, and so he didn't want to get involved in a lawsuit, and so that's why he terminated his services with them.
Thank you, by the way, for the detailed report. It's much appreciated. We get lots of, lots of questions, and it's clear that everybody wants this resolved. It's just a matter, really, as I see it, who pays for it and timeframe. So given that, it seems to me that we have three or four scenarios that could play out here, and once it's in our court, we should be prepared to play out those scenarios in, in, in a way that would be best interest of High Street. So I don't know that we need to go into closed session tonight to dream up these scenarios, but in, in fact, I think we need to be prepared for the worst-case scenario, the best-case scenario, and those scenarios so that we can, let me just throw out a, if, if a 353 incentive package needs to be put forward, and we don't have that in our books yet, maybe that's what we ought to be working for, or a, what other incentives we would do for that area of town, given a, a likely scenario of one over the other. So the city, I don't believe is, we're not, we're not the one holding up the process at this stage, but in a future stage, we, we ought to be prepared to move forward when we can move forward. So that's my point.
Councilman Schreiber?
Since we retained the structural engineer and attempts were made to stabilize to the best of ability, then is that cost paid for by the city, or will that cost be passed on at some point to the actual property owners?
It's my understanding that the cost for us to retain that structural engineer is something that would, that we are bearing the cost for. And so that was about $9,000, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. But that structural engineer did verify my findings because he came in after we determined that was a party wall. The insurance engineers, structural engineers, did not verify that before that. And so the, the, it's, it's a lot of money that we're talking about to demolish those buildings, and so.
When, when the actual, once the structural engineer made the determination as to what should be done to stabilize the, the building itself, then did we also incur the cost? Did that include the cost to actually do the stabilization? Was that over and above?
The original stabilization occurred the next day. That, that cost was borne by the owner of 200 East High, and he retained a structural engineer out of Ashland. It was not the, the structural engineer that we had. That was later on down the road. I mean, that action happened like the next day.
Okay.
So right now, though, we're waiting until all the legal actions are done, and so, but we're poised to go ahead and, and start doing what we have to do to, to bring the building down. It's just, we're very much conscious of the cost.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kroll?
I was just, I was just going to add that I've instructed the staff to keep track of the expenses that we incur and to be prepared to forward a bill as we can for those expenses that we think are legitimate to do so.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Related to my point with regard to scenarios playing out, should a scenario play out before, well, any given time, it seems to me we should be accounting for possible liabilities within our budget planning. I'm a little concerned, just like we have for gap financing for Capital Avenue, we have, we used to have 259,000, that's reduced, but now we, we may need to include some sort of financing within our budget. need to include some sort of financing within our budget for possible liabilities associated with this property, given one of the possible scenarios being played out. I just sense that we have a chance to be exposed here if we don't plan accordingly.
Further questions, comments? Okay, thank you for that update. Onto item 18, new business, and I believe Councilman Mahalovich may have a motion this evening.
I'll read the motion, and then I will hand it to the clerk, and then ask for a second, and then I'll explain it. "I move to have the council express support for a match of not to exceed $7,000 for a portion of the 10% required grant match for the Heartland Port Authority of Central Missouri from an agricultural, Missouri Agricultural Business Development Assistance Program, MoASBDA." Okay, having a second on that, the Heartland Port Authority is seeking some assistance for some detailed planning and a professional business plan, and that appears to be about $187,500. They're looking for a 10% match for that, so it's $18,700. The Missouri Soibea Council has agreed to pay $5,000 of it, so if you look at the balance, there's three entities, and we can divide that remaining balance by three, but I'm kind of saying we'll not pay up to $7,000, so in case all three entities don't come through with a match, we'll still be able to come up with a 10% match required, so I'm asking our support for the city administrator to provide up to 7, but not to exceed $7,000 in match, and it'd be $4,500 if Callaway County, Coe County, and us come in, but if they don't come in, it'll be like $6,200. I should do my math beforehand, but I rounded it off to 7. Yes, sir, I mean.
Councilman Graham?
I just have a question as relates to, where do we find that money that you're requesting for the public, you know, where are we going to get this up to $7,000?
Good question, I'd turn that over to the city minister.
Yeah, I think there are some internal savings in the current year budget that we'll be able to do. One of those might be salary savings, you know, when we have an employee that leaves, or something like that, so I will be able to find that.
So is that something that has to be paid, I mean, they're looking for the money, is like within the next 60 days, or is it 30 days, or what's the timeframe?
Well, the timeframe, the grants do every month, so if we, we're going to submit it to the end of this month, and they will tell us maybe in another month, and then this is a kind of a statewide grant, or localized grant, they may delay it. If it delays past our budget year, we may have to come back and ask for the same motion.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hesse.
Aye.
Kimna.
Motion passes, and thank you, Councilman Mahalovich, for your work on our Port Authority Board, appreciate that. Next, we will read the motion to go into closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman?
Madam Mayor, I?
Yes.
If it's regarding High Street, I don't feel the need myself to go into closed session.
Me either, I'll be voting no if that's it.
But I would yield to our counselor.
I have no additional business for the closed session.
Move for adjournment.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Any, oh, wait, unfinished business, anything? Okay, now, we've had a motion, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.